All right, you guys. Lord, we thank you for this day. Thank you for taking us to 2017 and into 2018. We hope that you'll look after us as well in this coming year and try to look over all the people in the town and make sure that we try to make the best decisions we can. Amen.
Let's lead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, you are now on session. Can't hardly breathe. I can, but I'm...
Eye up?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, everybody. I've just been reading some stuff online, and this may be more for my own, make me feel good than anything else, but I just wanted to read one little paragraph from the West Virginia Code, which is something that we adopted as a town some time ago, a year ago or so. So this is just a declaration of policy that comes from the section on Freedom of Information Act. It says, "Pursuant to the fundamental philosophy of the American constitutional form of representative government, which holds to the principle that government is the servant of the people and not the master of them, it is hereby declared to be the public policy of the state of West Virginia that all persons are, unless otherwise expressly provided by law, entitled to full and complete information regarding the affairs of government and the official acts of those who represent them as public officials and employees. The people in delegating authority do not give their public servants the right to decide what is good for the people to know and what is not good for them to know. The people insist on remaining informed so that they may retain control over the instruments of government they have created. To that end, the provisions of this article, the Freedom of Information Act, shall be liberally construed with the view of carrying out the above declaration of public policy." So it's about the... You don't get to decide what we have the right to know and what we shouldn't know, and we feel like there've been a lot of things going on in the town that you guys know about that you haven't told us about.
Such as?
Such as that we had owed $50,000 in back taxes.
Oh, that was discussed a couple of times, didn't it?
That was never discussed in the public meeting.
Yes, it was.
Until the last time. The last one, yes. It wasn't the last. That's the first we heard of.
That's when we found out about it.
Oh, that's when we just found out about it?
Yes.
They didn't say the amount until they were asked.
And that was stated at the meeting, too, that it was just found out.
But you didn't state that until Mick asked you what the amount was. You weren't going to state the amount.
Well, they just found out.
And we still don't know the exact amount because I just had to do an audit for the IRS.
Well, regardless of that, this all still applies, and my feelings about it are strong, and that's all I had to say.
But that was before us, and we're just now finding out information.
That's good.
Okay, anybody else?
No, Mr. Azure, and he left.
All right.
I remember I shouldn't have waited for the minutes from the last meeting, too. The meeting, the last meeting in December, that's right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay. Approval of the minutes is done. Okay, under correspondence, anybody got any correspondence? I do, but it's already on the agenda done for ways. Nothing?
I had this letter I got here from Robert Johnson. Okay, that's why I was wondering if it was down there or not.
Well, if you want to read it, go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no. I was just wondering about.
Anyone want to read that? I can't see it too good.
May I, Miss Smith, in City Council? I'm writing to you in reference to an incident Saturday, January 6, 2018, as to the flow of water coming from under my house through the drain onto West Harrison Street. I do not know what time the water started to flow, but Terry Cady woke me up around 10:30 a.m. and informed me of the water, stating that I did not have a water leak. I told T.I. that the water is the town's. I did not know it was flowing that long and strong for so many years. I was not sure what the issue was. I tracked down Junior Layton from Allen &amp; Plumbing around 12:30 to 1:00 p.m. Junior checked under my house and said the water is coming in through the block foundation and wall floor plate, coming in from behind the house into the basement out of the drain. When I went to T.I.'s house to advise him that I did not have any water leaks, that it was coming in the basement from behind me, T.I. said it was the town overflow and that things were frozen and that he had shut down the water plant. This is to advise and inform the city of Piedmont that when I receive the invoice from Allen &amp; for Junior's service, I will be submitting it to the city of Piedmont for payment as well. When the weather breaks, having a contractor to see how much damage there is to my foundation and internal walls, floor in my rec room. As Junior stated, this has been coming in for a period of time, which I noticed the floor sinking and wall cracking, but I did not know the cause until now. Ben Brathwaite was the one who called Terry Cady and advised him of the water and ice on West Harrison, as well as Bob Miller, both neighbors. My question is this, since I fully know the cause, since I finally know the cause, with all the recent work done on the water plant, why is the water flowing freely under my house and not into the overflow pipe that is next to Bob Johnson's lot, next to me? Is this not the purpose of this pipe? It was replaced when John Shingel was forming. How many years ago was that? Now I know where the meeting is come, where the water is coming from, not a wet spring as I thought. Also, winter council meetings. Robert Johnson, 18 West Harrison Street, Piedmont, West Virginia.
Okay, this is due to the act of that weather that we had. I'm not sure if all of this was just run off or what to deal with, but it's being investigated, and there will be an engineer looking at this. Okay, officers' reports. Who wants to start? You call?
They finally brought the wheelchair.
That's cool. Use it up?
Yep. The one is the adult seatbelt one, and then the other one is the wheelchair, and that flat design, you put your wheelchair up on it. Put it up so you can have a wheelchair.
That's good. That's cool.
So we would like to paint where my car is. We would like to paint that blue and put a handicap only there, so whoever comes to, that's like right by the trucks.
Yeah.
Paint a blue line there, right?
We're going to clear up here.
Are we going to go up here?
Yeah, just a little bit past this pole, we're going to put a handicap sign up.
Put on that pole, so when they get out, they can walk right along.
They'll be able to get through just a little way, so they'll bring right straight through and down here, because that tree's going just right through it this way. Do you want to know, well, the handicap signs aren't being used in town. We've got a few of them. We'll put one of them right here. We have the sign up here, all the wood. Let me know when you want to get that painted off.
And then I have a resident that has a child in a wheelchair. She's going to come down and get her picture taken.
Get some pictures in that, too, put on the second screen.
Okay. Even people in the manor, they could have picnics in the park, bring their residents down. I don't think anybody in the area's got a handicap sign, but...
I don't think so.
It might be something good.
Well, it's even if no one else has one, or they had one, it'd still be...
It's how, help them keep the kids from demolishing it.
Hit the camera.
There's a camera, there's a camera working off.
P-T-O-N. Yep, but the last time when I pulled it off to try to find the thing that you had on there, I gotta get a hold. There's a guy that's going to check it to match it up with the reader I got. So I mean, it's recording, but I gotta read it.
And I'm planning, I was going to do different, run it ready for the pool, I could do the hoagie and pick that stuff, but we did so well with the roast beef dinners, I did one of them.
I'll show you.
That's only two days of work, and I'll make this as much as not really going to have done.
Yeah.
So I'm planning on having on February, March, and April.
Let me know, I'll help you out.
Yeah, we had, that worked out good last time.
That's a good.
So I figure if I had three roast beef dinners, then we don't like to do a lot of selling, so we made close to $1,000 on that dinner. So if we have to carry out, they'll give us $3,000. I'm getting ready to pick some dates. How much is now?
The one thing I have is I sent out four more letters today. I have to get Reverend Robbie, because we couldn't issue some citations, because the folks didn't clean up like they were asked to, so...
Ernie, you got anything? I've been out.
The only thing I got, I've finally got the new lots put on in our office store here. We do have a camera here in the office now for when we need to take pictures. And working on a meeting with the EPA and the CSOs. I've already met with the sanitarians over here in Mineral County, got set up with them. And I also need to get a hold of the new OBM director.
You've got anything?
Eric's gone to the class, and we have some water bills to look over.
That's down the line there a little bit, decision on some of the water bills.
You went to the class?
Yeah.
Eric, yeah, oh, yeah.
Yeah, he started Monday. Testing on Friday, yeah.
All right, we closed some more accounts out at First United, and Mr. Shapiro finally confronted me. I wanted to know why we were taking our accounts away from there, and I told him that it was because of the fees, and if it was $2 short, they went ahead and charged us the $42 overdraft fee instead of, you know, pick up a phone and care of, as I said. But we have free banking, pretty much, and I think they'll treat us better than you guys did. And he was saying that, well, you know, we pay the city of Piedmont thousands in taxes and this and that, and if we were to lose our business here, and I said, well, I don't think just, you know, from losing the city's accounts, the banks will close. So we have almost all of them closed out and transferred over. And also, I've been working on the budget, and I'll need a budget request from each department, what you think your needs will be for the fiscal year. And I'll have, the next meeting, I think, we'll schedule a meeting for the beginning of March to put everything together.
Uh, yeah, that's the dates.
Yeah.
Hey, Carrie, do you have the budget for the water plant for last year?
Um, for last year? No. 2009 and 10 is the latest I found.
Can I ask a question on the other line? Just, how many, how much overdraft fees were we paying Piedmont Bank?
$42 for, if we were overdrawn six cents, they would charge us the $42 instead of picking up the phone and saying, hey, you know, you're this much short.
That's how they make their money. I just wondered, I was surprised.
They're not, they're not going to make any more money.
How much money did we pay them in overdraft fees?
We paid a lot in overdraft fees previously. They've got the banking down now.
That's what I'm saying. Previously, how, it was a lot?
Uh, not a whole lot, but enough, you know, that they, they could have very easily picked up the phone, you know?
Well, actually, probably shouldn't have been overdraft fees anyway.
Well, and we were constantly, you know, they're not, they're not allowed to charge bank fees for accounts that have grants in them, you know, and we constantly had to be done, can you take these fees off? You know, and they knew. They've been our bank for how long? You know, and we're having better service from M&amp;T already, and we've been with them for two months.
I just wondered how much overdraft fees were. I just wouldn't worry terrible.
Too much.
No number there.
Oh, not all together, no.
We probably have it in QuickBooks, but we're not bringing that up tonight.
Yeah, I mean, most of it would have been like back when Ms. Betsy was here, and they were pulling money out of this account and out of this account and putting it all together to make payroll and, you know, and just not having online banking, so they could just look at it immediately and know what was in there.
Okay, anybody else got anything? I don't know if anyone's seen the Kaiser paper today about the meeting in Elk Garden. You know, I've talked to all the council members about meeting with the Chamber of Commerce and getting something together with them. Elk Garden has already had their first meeting, and everything went real good. We have a new Chamber of Commerce president, which is John Lackey. He's really spearheading these things to move them forward and try to make every little municipality in Mineral County part of Mineral County. For years, we kind of felt neglected by the county, and Elk Garden was in the same, but we was, you know, these little guys, no one seems to mention them. But anyhow, I'm pulling together a letter to send out to all the businesses here, and if we have to vote on this letter, I will probably be having a special meeting just to do it if it's necessary, depending on the timeframe that we have. All the businesses are going out, trying to get them together, trying to get them to unite as part of Mineral County, and assure that Piedmont, Elk Garden, Ridgely, and all these smaller little municipalities are known as part of Mineral County. You know, Kaiser being, though, it's the county seat, naturally, they're recognized as Mineral County. You never hardly see anything from Mineral County, from Piedmont, Elk Garden, Ridgely, any of them. So that's what we're striving for. I have a letter partially drawn up right now, and I would like to ask if when this comes about, that all the council members would be there. I've made arrangements with the Legion to get their room, so that, but I have to give a date. So when I get the letter drafted up, we'll either have a meeting on it or to accept the letter, get it out to all the businesses, and go from there. Okay, so that's about part of that report. Some police report. Robbie?
I'll keep it short this time. We'll get, had ladies stop me outside here today, and I've had a couple of others come and approach me. I was away last Saturday a week ago and went to Louisville, Kentucky for the birth of my first granddaughter, and then get home Tuesday night, well, Wednesday morning, 3:30, took us 14 and a half hours to get back on an eight and a half hour trip because of the snow and all the truck wrecks and stuff on the main highways. Anyway, got back, and I could see where four-wheelers had been just going wild that before I came in. I didn't see any at 3:30 when I got home, but I saw where they'd been. So this lady said they were doing it all over the, on the streets and everywhere, you know, so I know who most of them are. I've already warned them enough. National Resource Police, they've had me watch them, and the woman even told me she could hear them going up the water plant. She could hear them going up on the mountain above that, which is Verso. And so I've spoke with NRP also, and they're going to try to watch it, too, but as for, I was hoping Jean Brathwaite was here, so you could put it in the paper, because sometimes she puts her quotes in there pretty good. But the warnings are done. So from here on out, it's going to be citations and impoundment, so I'll start taking them. There's certain stipulations where you can do that, so, you know, that's that's just, I mean, the type of tires that they have and things, they've got passed all over through people's yards and behind their houses and stuff where they're getting up different places, and we're going to have to stop it before. And the bad thing about it is, too, that, you know, what's going to happen if they get hurt somewhere? Cut through someone's backyard and they got a clothesline. You're allowed to have a clothesline, you know?
And if they get hurt, it's your fault.
Well, they're going to, yeah, some of them can come back on the, you know, on that type of thing, on the landowner and stuff, so we'll do that. Now, I'm not sure. I'm going to go ahead and say okay if I skip out. I have a, have a stress debriefing on passing of Deputy Frank, so...
Yes, I'm sorry to hear that.
I helped him out when he graduated with Morris Daughter, and when he started in 2014, we were, you do field training officer stuff, you know, and taking him all over the place before he goes to the police academy and tell him what to look forward to at the police academy, and then try to show him some of the roads in this county, because, I mean, he was from Burlington Kaiser area. Took him down some places, said, I'll never find my way out of here, you know, it was like, you know, he was a real good boy, you know, so he'll be missed by all, so we're going to have a debriefing tonight at 7:00 at the detention center, so a lot of the officers in the county will be down there. So if you're not, won't need me for anything else, I'd like to go ahead and get down there so I can
That's fine.
be with them all, meet with them. All right, anything else, give me a holler, okay? Have a good night.
All right, anybody got any unfinished business? Okay, new business. We got a budget amendment for the additional fencing on Phase 2 of the water project. We had $1,928 or $38 left over. We finally, after about eight tries, got an approval to spend that money on fencing around the water plant, just like Robbie was just mentioning, four-wheelers and stuff running up there. We're going to fence that off so that they can't get up there. How much fencing do we need there, about?
For 200, fencing, the posts, the clamps, everything we need could be $1,930.24.
So we're $2 and something over budget.
$1,930.24. And Friday evening, when I go into Cumberland, I will stop and talk to a few people I know there at Lowe's to get a bill, not a estimate or anything like that. It'll, it'll be written up a bill so we can get it to Pam, so they'll release the funds.
Okay, so we'll, we'll have, we'll have a net 30 days to do that so that before we have to make a payment on it, and hopefully the funds get back and get released for that fencing before we end up having to pay for it, which is going to be dramatic, but anyhow, that's it. I'd say we, we need a motion for, for the amendment of the fencing.
I'll make a motion that, amendment for fencing for Phase 2 water, $1,132, $30.24.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, we'll have to get the paperwork out for that also, to Pam so we can actually get paid for the bill that we're going to make. Okay, the paperwork for the drawdown on Pearl Street last week, I think every, you know, last time we didn't have a council meeting, but we did have a progress report on the sewage project. It was on January the 11th at 5:30. Steve Buchanan was in here from Thrasher and Pam Kiplinger from Region 8 and gave us the whole rundown on what was happening there.
I did, I made a little thing.
Huh?
I made a little thing for that.
Yeah, yeah, we got it. This is basically what we, what we said there. There's another thing, I don't know if it's on down here or not, but during, for this sewage project, and as we said, we got the Pearl Street drawdown here, the paperwork for it coming up. And we have, we have some things going there that Thrasher went ahead and took the responsibility of bringing the electric company in to start that since we've had the easement made by by the fellows that owns the property. And they're, they just got to set a pole and bring the power into the, the muffin monsters, into the controllers of the muffin monsters, and we'll be able to start them up. And that's also a drawdown for the Pearl Street, which is here, so...
I'll make a motion that we sign the paperwork for the drawdown of the Pearl Street project.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carried. We will get the paperwork to, to Region 8 on both accounts. Closeout discussion on the water project. I don't know what, what all we got for a closeout discussion. There's not a lot to be said because there wasn't a lot done. The cold weather and the replacement of, they do have the pipes tied together that could have added to this problem, I guess, would you say, Ernie?
A little bit.
But it wasn't the sole fault of this thing with Mr. Johnston. But we do have, we do have some things that has been completed up there, and there's a, really, there isn't, is there anything else up there to complete?
See, I know they, they put the other pump in that one station up there. They did get that done the other day.
Well, see, that was on a different, that was on the sewage project.
Okay, up at the water plant, basically, all I know they did was went in there and hooked that drain line up, and that was it.
Okay, well, I don't know, I guess it would be better to discuss this with Steve more than, more than what our...
I'd say so.
Our intelligence goes, because all I know they did, but we do, there is some meter work to do up there that needs to be done as far as some couple of meters and an electrical outlet that needs entered. I do know that needs done yet. I don't think it's been done.
So would you like for me to call Steve in the morning and get the particulars on that and see when we can get him there?
Well, I'm not sure that all of it hasn't been done. I haven't been up there for about a week and a half. I'm not going to go up there and tear up the surgery that I spent so much time trying to recover from.
Well, I could call Steve and, you know, find out. He'll, he'll tell me if they have or haven't. If they haven't, I'll give you a call, then we'll take it from there.
Okay, sounds good. Okay, we're up to you, going with discussion on certain water deals.
We have two of them that are in the same, are same house, one down, one half of the house, one on the other, where the, apparently, the meters... weren't reading right. Is that right?
And it's what I understood.
And their water bills have been out of whack, so I don't care to adjust them because you could see on the one side, his was fifty-eight something all the way down through until the meters started messing up. And his went sky high and the other one went down low. So apparently they were affecting each other. So we went ahead and I told her to go ahead and estimate those and. Huh?
And what we talk about, Justin?
Was he?
Well, I, I also suggest it, uh, just it out and we do have new meters.
One twenty-seven and a half.
Two new meters in.
Yeah, we just got in some new water meters last week and, uh, to, over the cold spell, we've had quite a few of them that was busted, frozen. Which everyone knows.
We, we got six new meters in and, uh, it's a dozen new meter bottoms.
And is that all the meter bottoms you have on order at present?
Yes. Uh, I can order more, get more in here. Uh, might take about two weeks there on back order again.
Well, that, that gives us eighteen plus we had four over there, didn't we?
Yes.
I, I think that we need to try to stretch this out a bit because what we had to do over this cold weather is pull our financial, stately it up a little bit from, uh, what we generally have this time of year, so.
Okay, then we have another one here. That they sent him out a certified letter and he didn't pick it up or respond to it. He's living over in Westernport and evidently they've got a shut-off notice for him over there too.
Well, you know, that's some of the laws protect them and do nothing for us.
And this one here, at Jordan, that was the one where someone else was living there. But it was still in his name and he knew it. And they were supposed to go ahead and have it turned over into their name when the water bill was paid off. But it wasn't paid off, they moved out. So he's got a hundred and fifty dollar deposit that's supposed to be returned to him and I told Carrie to call him, tell him he's not getting returned. Plus he owes what, another thirty-four dollars on it? So she's gonna call him and let him know that the deposit doesn't come back to him and he still owes the thirty-four dollars, cause it is still in his name. He didn't,
He never came in.
He didn't come in and close it out or anything, so. And they've been sent to him in return, but she talked to him on the phone.
Okay, so we need a motion to, uh, to estimate those two bills?
Yes. Make a motion that we estimate the two bills for the, where the meter was broken. Yeah, one twenty-seven and a half.
What's the other one?
It's the other side, is it one twenty-seven?
One twenty-seven and one twenty-seven and a half.
Okay. Okay, I got a motion and I got a second. All in favor? Anyone oppose?
Can I ask a question? I don't know whether I need approval for this, but there was, uh, Michael Bog, uh, forty-seven Aaron Street, he came in. Um, he got service December fifteen, two thousand sixteen. He did put a hundred and fifty dollar down. He's never been late, he's always pays bill. And from what I understand, if they're not late and their bill is up to date, uh, after a year, they get their deposit back. Okay, can I go ahead and give him his deposit back? Okay, I, I forgot to give you that one.
It's gotta be given back with interest.
The interest is charged through the system.
Okay, I never really, I got a all in the favor for the motion to accept those bills on one twenty-seven and one twenty-seven and a half. So all in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, motion carried. Next, uh, next thing on our list is the, the decision of possible sale of the seed lot down here. We have a letter from, from Jerry Wizner, who is representing the West Virginia University. Says, Dear Mayor and Council, I'd like to purchase a vacant lots that's owned by the city of Pete Mon, which joins the property on Second Street. This lot sits between my lots, he's calling them my lots, but, uh, they're actually W V U's. Uh, sits between my lots and City Hall. The lot would be used for additional parking for patrons of the New Riverside Healthcare Clinic. I respectfully submit an offer of two thousand five hundred dollars. Uh, also, he said that this lot could be used for anything that the city needs to use it for during non-business hours of the clinic, uh, such as during Home Fest and this and that. Uh, and also, uh, well, that was about the gist of what we came to with this period. There's a, I wanna try to get it through him that W V U tries to repair the sidewalks. I don't know if that's gonna happen or not, but we need some sidewalk repair all the way down to the corner.
Selling that lot.
What's that, Nick?
Selling that lot. Selling that lot, we want it to pay insurance on it. They'll, they'll maintain it. We, they'll fix the sidewalk all the way. Having to park that library in Tupac where, where your sinkhole is, ain't kidding.
You just don't wanna mix.
What you saying?
So, oh, it's not up to me, okay. Uh, y'all heard the proposal here? Huh?
Do we have to advertise it for sale?
I do not know, do we?
Yeah, I don't think we can just sell it, I think we did have to advertise it.
I think so.
I think you do too, I think it has, you have to have a public auction. With the sale, we can call Ethics and find out for sure.
Do you have to have someone come in and survey and find out exactly what the lines are?
It should be on the deal.
I definitely have somebody come in and check it out more.
He's buying, that's his deal.
Huh?
He's buying, that's his deal.
You're right, I think we still have to put a lot for bids, we just can't.
No, I'm just saying, survey and everything, yes.
It'd be on whoever wanted to buy it first, you tell them that.
Okay, well, uh, do you think that we ought to put this for bids, is that what the motion we're hearing here?
Is there any way that we can use it for anything, I mean?
The only time we use it is during Home Fest and if they're offering it.
Well, I'm saying, the town needs parking too, could we, you know?
That's.
Is it worth the taxes, insurance and money?
No.
I think not.
Probably not.
And I don't think we'd get that much out of anybody else.
I don't believe so either, that's why I think if we put it up for public auction, uh, we have to advertise it and we can set a date for them.
We don't have to put it for public auction, we just have to advertise it for sale.
Yeah, that works.
And take bids.
So I can call it Ethics to make sure that's the correct.
I asked if you asked.
Yeah.
Well.
I think anything the city sells has to be advertised.
Over five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
Is that the only lot we want?
Agenda for our next meeting under unfinished business and we'll see what we can take care of in the meantime. We might be able to get everything done, advertised and, uh, deadlines done so that we can actually do a vote on it next time for unfinished business.
Is that the only lot we might wanna get rid of or?
Well, that's the only lot that they would want.
Somebody else might, you know, would be having that.
I don't, I don't see anybody paying twenty-five hundred dollars for that lot.
No, they're talking only that, well, we own a couple of those, don't we?
We do, but I mean, they're not, they won't be one of the. I mean, they're spread out.
Somebody might wanna buy it for the house or something or whatever.
I doubt it, this, this bitty little lot here.
They talk about that lot, they're talking about, we own a lot in town.
We do, yeah.
What's the sense of keeping, you gotta pay insurance, the taxes, everything.
Cause we, right now, we got someone wanting to buy.
Yeah, that one, that's what I said, is that the only lot that we wanna put in the letter?
Yes, for that.
Okay, okay, you know, you could put in lots and you do as long as you say, you know.
Now, we need to
Say just this lot.
Break it down, say so there's a price to put on that particular lot. Okay, so what we'll do, put it under unfinished business for next time. Uh, are we saying that we need to advertise this during the next meeting session?
I'm gonna call Ethics and I'll say, um, we're gonna make a motion that if we are within our rights, that we're going to advertise and put it in the paper for sale. And we will, that part right there is what I'm making a motion to do. Not for the sale or anything, but if we're within our rights, to go ahead and put it in the paper and advertise it for sale.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, so we, you know, we'll check the D S extension. And probably oughta call the municipal league also.
Yeah, I know, because sales, sales will have to go.
I'll call them or a lawyer.
If you can outright sell it, sell it or not, put that.
Yeah.
Would that be settled, will you remain with us?
Well, that's information we can get for free from the municipal league, so.
Okay, so restate, restate your motion again so we can make sure this is right.
I make a motion that after I call the Ethics Commission and confirm that it's within our rights, what we exactly have to do to sell it, if advertise it in the paper for sale is correct, that's what we're going to do and resume the discussion next meeting for unfinished business.
Okay.
I second it.
Okay, I got a second, all in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay.
Can I, I'm if we can sell it straight out without advertising it, if they say we can do that,
Yeah.
then we should be able to just go ahead and do that.
Yes.
Right.
I say, I'm gonna call them first and if we're within our rights, we can go ahead and sell it. But I'm gonna make sure that we don't have to advertise and put it in the paper. If we do, that's what we're gonna do and put it as unfinished business at our next meeting.
Okay. All right. Our next meeting will be you think, February seventh?
Fourteenth.
This is February seventh. So our next meeting will be at
Valentine's Day.
February the fourteenth.
Oh, I'm thinking two weeks, I'm sorry.
And
I know, I thought.
Is this going to be a five-thirty meeting or is it going to be a six o'clock?
That'd be the first meeting of the week, most, so it'd be the business.
Are we still doing progress?
It's the seventh, are we done?
No, it's the second and fourth. I'm thinking every two weeks.
Wrap-up report?
Well, I'm not sure, but, uh, they should be coming in to do at least a wrap-up report and a conclusion to the, to the, uh, project that, the water plant Phase Two. Let's, let's do that at five-thirty. Uh, the agenda has, don't have to go out right at this present time, I'll call and see what they're going.
So set it for five-thirty anyway, right now?
Progress.
Okay. We're gonna get these, this thing signed for the fencing and the order drawdown and be cool. Okay, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Anyone oppose? Okay, we are adjourned.